Good evening and welcome to our Cobb County Board of Commissioners regular meeting this April 23rd, 2024. I'm pleased today that we have Pastor Catherine Rankin of Kirkwood Presbyterian Church. She will be providing our invocation. The invocation will be followed by the pledge, which will be brought by Officer Adam Moore. For those of you willing and able, please stand for both our invocation and pledge.
If you would like, please join me in prayer.
Gracious Lord, turn us all toward you so that your light may guide all of the decisions that are made here today. Turn the Board of Commissioners toward your ways of justice and peace and care for all. Bless them with wisdom in the difficult and in the simplest of matters. From sewer rehabilitation to new flashing yellow lights to safety initiatives. Lord bless the achievements that are celebrated and recognized today. That they may serve as inspiration for all here in Cobb County. May we rejoice in their successes, especially for the Cal High School Boys Basketball Team. Lord, we confess, we don't always do what is right, and sometimes we are selfish, sometimes we are tired, and sometimes we are ignorant. Continue to speak truth to us, even the hard truths, that we may join our efforts to strive for peace for all. And I ask your blessings upon the efforts of the End Jewish Hatred Day. May this proclamation encourage others. God, we thank you for the dedication of everyone who is here today, for the public servants and the officials. And today we lift up David Hankerson with gratitude and appreciation. Holy One, keep turning us all toward your goodness and toward your mercy. Amen.
Please draw along with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Rankin for just your mindfulness of the business before the Board of Commissioners today. And also thank you Officer Moore for bringing the pledge. We are now going to the presentation portion of our meeting. And we will be starting the presentations with presentation number two, which is to recognize April 30th as National Therapy Animal Day. And that presentation will be brought by Commissioner Gambrell.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Did we have a consensus to move the Hankerson presentation?
Yes, we've talked to Commissioner, or excuse me, to the county manager, and we're good on that.
Okay, because usually when we move something, we have, you ask if the board's okay with that. And yesterday we brought up the fact that some of us thought it should stay.
Okay, let's honor today, please. Let's honor the day.
Thank you. We will start off with the National Therapy Animal Day. And for those who are part of this presentation, feel free to join Commissioner Gambrell.
Great. We are here today to recognize and honor therapy and service animals who alongside their human handlers, bring comfort and healing to those in need. April 30th, 2024 is the day of appreciation known as Animal Therapy, or National Animal Therapy Day.
The Cobb County Board of Commissioners proclaims April 30th, 2024 as National Therapy Animal Day. This designation recognizes the significant impact of therapy animals in improving human health and well-being. Interacting with therapy animals, like these with Cobb-based pet partners, has been shown to reduce stress, relieve depression, and provide various health benefits. The proclamation highlights the essential role of animal therapy teams in Cobb County who bring comfort and healing to various individuals in the community, including veterans, seniors, patients, students, and those nearing the end of life. The proclamation also encourages more pet owners to consider becoming pet partner volunteers to expand access to therapy animal visits. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2024, National Therapy Animal Day in Cobb County, and salute these exceptional therapy animals and their human companions who volunteer their time to bring comfort and healing to those in need. This the 23rd day of April, 2024.
It's really exciting because a lot of people don't realize that, you know, miniature therapy horses are a thing. And to kind of bring more awareness to that, it just helps spread the word for us to be able to go on more visits and have people reach out and maybe be interested in doing it on their own as well.
Thank you. We are now at the second proclamation for today, our recognition. And that is to recognize April 29th as End Jewish Hatred Day. And ask for those that are a part of this presentation to please join the Commissioner up front.
I do not know if we will have anyone join us today for this proclamation. And so with that, I do have some remarks that I will give. You know, and the idea a few years ago, that this board took the steps to put together an anti-hate resolution. And that was for all groups, religions, race, creed, et cetera. Because this is Cobb County and we believe in one Cobb. Everyone should feel included. Everyone should feel protected. And we do know that with sensitivities, especially happening globally, it's affecting our local community. And we have groups that are here that want to know that there is support. And these are all different types of groups. And in keeping with that, the End Jewish Hatred Day is a proclamation that came before us as a board to acknowledge, and this is a day that is celebrated nationally. And in recognizing the sensitivities, we reached out to make sure that there were no issues with the language of the proclamation, with the idea of the proclamation, with acknowledging the different needs within different communities. And that was met with approval. It was met with acceptance. And unfortunately, recently, there was some extra introduction of concern. But what I want to reassure everyone is that this is the first of many acknowledgements to end the vitriol within our community. We cannot let external things erode our ability to talk to one another, to love one another, to respect one another. And it affects ourselves and our children as well. And so in acknowledging this, we also are looking to acknowledge End Muslim Hatred Day because of the sensitivities that exist. And that was something acknowledged amongst our community, different groups, making that a point. And so I wanted to just make that really clear for our community because I don't like it when narratives run away from what's on the ground and what's happening and the real conversations and the real pain that exists within our community and the willingness to reach out and have very difficult conversations. So with that, I assume I'm giving you the proclamation today, but it's good to see you. Certainly, this is whereas for millennia, the Jewish people have sustained their shared religions, religious, cultural, ethnic identity and traditions in the face of enslavement, persecution, genocide, segregation, discrimination, and all manner of adversity. And their history encouraged many Jews to become leading proponents of supporters of the civil rights movement, marching shoulder to shoulder, united in support for equal rights, equal protection under the law, and the recognition and respect of human dignity. And despite the advances made in promoting social justice for other minority groups, the Jewish community has continued to be subjected to antisemitism and Jew hatred, including discrimination in the workplace, at work, and in public spaces. And this antisemitism and Jew hatred has manifested in places of work, on campuses, and in society, expressing itself as both discrimination and violence targeting Jews for their identity. And hate crimes directed against the Jewish community have skyrocketed in recent years, inspiring the formation of a grassroots End Jew Hatred Civil Rights Movement to alter public discourse and make Jew hatred unacceptable in contemporary society, empowering Jews with positivity and strength to discover and enjoy their heritage in whichever manner they choose without fear of attack or persecution. And we all share an obligation to condemn and combat Jew hatred in all of its forms. And we recognize the urgent need to stand against Jew hatred so that the intergenerational trauma of the past shall never be repeated. Now we, the Board of Commissioners, honor the long history of this community and declare April 29th as End Jew Hatred Day, this 23rd day of April, 2024. Thank you. And just some remaining comments. There's so much for each of us to learn about all of the groups that make up our community. It's a beautiful tapestry. And that is something I know we, as Cobb County Commissioners, support. And it's also something that we have to be intentional about through programs, outreach, and constant communication. So I thank everybody for partnership in that. And that will conclude unless you have words you want to say.
You said it all.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our next presentation will be to recognize the achievement of the members of the Cal Longhorn Boys Basketball Team for winning the state championship. For those here as a part of that presentation, please join the Commissioner up front.
Okay. It's quite an honor to have back-to-back champions here, state champions. So last year, if y'all remember, the girls' basketball team and the boys' won the state championship for Class 5A basketball. And this year, the boys took the throne again. And so, you know, you'll be expected to have a three-peat next year, right?
No problem.
Right, Coach? Okay. So we thought it was fitting to recognize the men's basketball team at Cal for winning back-to-back championships, basketball championships. So with us tonight, with the team and their coaches, is also two of our school board members. You just saw Randy Scammerhorn, who is the chair of the Cobb County School Board this year, and Mr. David Chastain, whose post represents Cal and other schools, but Cal is in his post, his district. So I'm gonna read one of the certificates. And then I'll just go through and hand out to all you champions. Certificate of Achievement presented to Adam Barnes. Which one's Adam?
He's not here today.
He's not here tonight? Okay. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you as a manager to the Cal High School Longhorns Basketball Team on winning- on winning the 2024 High School Association 5A Boys Basketball State Championship. The Longhorns overcame Eagles Landing 62 to 51, earning a historic back-to-back state title win. In pursuit of this milestone, you finished an astounding 27-game winning streak. That deserves a round of applause. So you have joined an elite category in Georgia high school sports, and we wish you continued success. This the 23rd day of April 2024. So I'll have you take those, the ones that aren't here, back. Okay, how about Cyrus Bradford? He's a manager, too? How did I get out of order? Well, it's alphabetical. So, yeah. CJ Brown? He's here. Congratulations. Good job. Jalen Oden? I'm sorry, Jalen Colen? Okay, so which ones of y'all were here last year? All right, that's awesome. Okay, Landon Duncan? He's not here. How about Chase Graham? He's here. I know who's the tallest back there. I think you should play for the Tar Heels. Where's he going? Don't tell me, dude. Okay, that's all right. Zach Graves? Congratulations. BJ Love? BJ Love? You got me covered, right? Chris McFlavish? Congratulations. Jordan Montgomery? Congratulations. Cannon Richards? Okay, how tall are you? 6'7". Are you a senior? Where are you going to school?
Walford.
Oh, in South Carolina, okay. Well, close, but not quite. Well, good luck to you. Trey Smith? Is he here? Okay. Connor? Staphylaris? Wait a minute, Connor. Connor is also an intern with the Northeast Cobb Business Association. I have the coaches. Where was I today, huh? Okay, now, we have the coaches. And we have Jermaine Sellers, the head coach. Baron Cooper? Chris McCurskey? I get a hug. Oh, you know what? I forgot to put on my Kell shirt. I have a Kell shirt I was gonna put on. Rafe Ajay? And he's not here. Okay, so this is your Kell Men's Basketball 5A State Champions, two years in a row.
We thank you for this honor and recognition. These guys work hard on and off the court, and their work ethic and character is why they're champions. So we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Y'all want to say anything?
I don't really have anything to say, but it sounds like somebody here needs to work on a Tar Heel scholarship somewhere.
So if the parents would like to come up for the picture, you're most welcome to come up. And we'll form a couple of rows. Get that back and hand me that t-shirt, please. Are parents coming up? Okay, wait a minute. I don't have to put it on before. All right, let's go Longhorns.
Congratulations to our basketball team from Kell High School. Now for the grand finale of our presentations today, we would like those who are here to recognize the renaming of our Cobb County building in honor of our former county manager, David Hankerson, to please join us up front.
We are very pleased to have before you the friends and family and spouse of our former county manager, David Hankerson. We have a proclamation to recognize him for his contribution, for his many years of service to this Cobb County government and to Cobb County overall. And I will read the words of the proclamation just to do his legacy justice for today. Whereas David Hankerson spent more than three decades in Cobb County government, public service, rising to become its first African-American county manager. He was one of the longest-serving county managers in the state of Georgia and known for his leadership, integrity, and work ethic. And whereas under Hankerson's management, Cobb County was a leader for the state, region, and nation. Examples of this include the decades of the AAAA National Bond Ratings, construction of the East-West Connector, and the successful opening of both SunTrust Park and The Battery. And I believe we have Mike Plant here with us today from the Atlanta Braves. David also started the Public Safety Make-A-Wish 5K. And whereas he was a certified public manager, leadership Cobb alumnus, a graduate of the Regional Leadership Institute, and a member of the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, General Government, and Natural Resources and Environmental Policy Committees. Hankerson served on many civic and service boards, including the Cobb County YMCA Board of Directors, the Tobin Nobis Center, the Shorter College Board of Visitors, and the Southern Polytechnic State University Foundation Board. And whereas Hankerson earned countless awards, including the Carl Vinson Institute of Government Excellence and Public Service Award, the Cobb County Management Award, the Dr. Carter G. Woodson Freedom Award, the NAACP Citizenship Award, and the Cobb Chamber of Commerce McHenderson Award for Outstanding Community and Public Service, the Marietta Daily Journal Citizen of the Year, and the Cobb Chronicle Man of the Year. A scholarship in his and his wife's name was established at Kennesaw State University for the Master's Program in Public Administration. And whereas even after his retirement in 2017, his public service continued with the ACCG, where he became the Director of Governmental and Public Affairs. During his retirement, Hankerson had a garden at home and would give away the food he grew. He passed peacefully at the age of 77 on January 25th, 2024, with his wife and his children by his bedside. And therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, we celebrate David Hankerson's life of discipline, dedication, and public service. His accomplishments, which we listed, are still too many to be listed here. But examples remain all around us in the strong foundation he laid for our community. He is missed, yet he will always serve as our inspiration. This the 23rd day of April 2024. And there's a framed proclamation of David that's before you today. Yes. With that, we have a special guest that I shared here before. First, I want to give honor to Millie Rogers. It's so good to see you here today, who's also worked here alongside our former county manager. You really should be up here, but you can go wherever you'd like. But we also have another special guest, which is Mike Plant of the Atlanta Braves, here to also partake in today's presentation. And I'm gonna turn this mic over to you.
Thank you. It's an honor to be called a special guest. So thank you. So a couple of weeks ago, I was here talking about our fiscal impact that, you know, that we've made annually now for the county based on the success of Truist Park and The Battery. And, you know, we're all smart enough in the Braves organization. We play baseball really well. But we're also smart, as far as running our business, to know that we didn't do this alone. And these five ladies to my right, several of the Commissioners in the last 10 years that are no longer here, obviously Tim Lee and Mike Boyce, also Jackie sitting over there. We've been able to jump on their shoulders and rely on them to help us get where we are. And that all started with David Hankerson. And when we started this project, I remember many, many discussions with David. He was, had incredible wealth of knowledge, obviously. He was great at relationships, as Lisa said. His leadership skills were second to none. I think the thing that I most was impressed with was I felt like my hair was on fire every day. And because it was for all of us. But he was calm, so calm. There was nothing I ever saw that rattled him. So he was, again, just an incredible calming influence for us. And just every day that we had an issue, he'd always hang up the phone with me saying, "Don't worry, I've got it. I'll get back to you quickly." And I really, as I said, that's, when I look back on it, that's why we're successful, because of his contributions. And they don't go unnoticed by our entire organization. So a small token of our appreciation, I know on opening night in 2017, we gave him a jersey with his name on the back. I've been with the Braves for 21 years. It's the only second time that I've seen our team do this. But I hope you can find a place in your home. Here's a jersey with the number 24, which hopefully we got this right. This is the number of years he was with Cobb County and is signed by our entire team. So he'll be a Brave for life. Thank you.
Turn the microphone over to our county manager for the rest of the presentation.
Well, thank you. I get, my heart gets full every time I think about Mr. H. So I just want to say to the family, he will always be remembered here as a very special place. We're excited that the board is gonna consider tonight voting to name this facility, which he spent probably more hours of the day and night here than he did at home after Mr. Hankerson. So we're excited about that. Thank you. We love you as family. And if there's ever anything we can do for you, all you have to do is call. And with that, we would just like to share that this is what the rendering of the facility will look like, named after Mr. H., your dad, Mrs. Hankerson's husband. We appreciate all that you do, so thank you so much.
Well, I'll have remarks from his family.
I'd like to thank the Cobb County Commissioners and county manager Jackie McMorris for honoring David with this proclamation. David truly loved Cobb County. He managed it with dignity and honesty. And he also loved his family. And here with me tonight are his children, his three sons, Sean, Shane, Brian, and our daughter Erica and son-in-law Glenn. We love David and we miss him and we're proud of him. We miss him every day. And knowing David, he's looking down upon us with a big, big smile on his face, acknowledging this proclamation, too. Again, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Those remarks were by his wife, Ms. Hankerson. So with that, did you get all the pictures you needed with the family by the podium? Okay, okay. Yeah, so the Board of Commissioners can come on the dais? Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Plant? Mr. Plant, you've been summoned, yes. Yes, and please remain. We're going to make a motion now to make this official. Commissioners, I move that we approve the renaming of the Cobb County Building at 100 Cherokee Street to the David Hankerson Building. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Yes, Commissioner Gamble.
I'd like the clerk to record my statement as to the Home Rule actions that were taken by the board that can be found on page 71 of today's agenda.
Recognize Commissioner Braw's statement.
Yes, I handed it to the clerk earlier. But I would just like to say also, as the longest-serving commissioner up here, Mr. Hankerson, there'll never be anybody like Mr. H. He was dearly loved and fair, honest, and full of character and integrity. So, we'll never forget him either, and our hearts go out to you all.
Well stated. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any additional comments? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0. We are now at our first public comment, and I will turn things over to our county attorney.
Thank you, Chair and the Board. As the Board provides the podium for public comment, it's appropriate to review the related meeting rules. Please state your name, and if you're speaking on behalf of an organization, all comments should be made to the commission as a body and addressed through the chair. Public comment is not a dialogue with the Board, but an opportunity for speakers to provide their comments to the Board. Comments should not be slanderous. The Board encourages, regardless of the topic, for the audience to be respectful and courteous to all speakers. Everyone attending this meeting should give others the right to both listen and to be heard by treating each other's with civility. Statements made during the public comments portion don't necessarily reflect the opinions of the Board or the administration of Cobb County Government. There's a timer on the podium, and each speaker has three minutes. The first speaker is Kathy Sloth.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Slough, like plow. I live in Marietta, Georgia. I am retired. I live on Social Security, and I drive a 1999 Toyota Camry with 235,000 miles on it, because that's about all I can afford. I would like to ask that the Board of Commissioners not impose any additional fees or taxes on us, your constituents. The first one is, I'm against the stormwater fee, rain tax proposal, and the code. Right now, there's still 15 mil from the Water Department going into the general fund. That would cover the stormwater needs. Also, it appears the water rate is going up an additional 10%. I'm aware that each commissioner gets 200,000 in a slush fund. Maybe that could help with that. In November, we've got the MSPLAS 30-year 1% sales tax proposal. This will be forever, not just 30 years, because the most permanent thing in the world is a temporary government program. The current annual transit system budget is 29 million, and they lose 25 million, which is paid for with our tax dollars. 100,000 rides last year, so that's a subsidy of $31 with my tax dollars. It appears the 2025 budget will be at least 1.35 billion from the current 2024 budget of 1.2 billion. In the past four budget cycles, if this goes through, this will be raising spending of our tax dollars up 35%. There'll be some more tax hearings, like we had last year, and that's increasing our taxes. It appears the BOC's goal for our hard-earned tax dollars has got to stop. I didn't retire to have more taxes, stormwater fees, or more property taxes. I've tightened my fiscal belt. How about you guys? Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Christine Rosman.
Hello, Christine Rosman, Marietta. Once again, I'm noticing some big disconnects between what the Cobb County taxpayers want and what the three particular commissioners are delivering by their voting record. First would be the three Board of Commissioners members who have a brazen, have made a brazen decision to create and implement Home Rule maps. Again, brazenly going against the rule of law, going against Georgia Constitution. And last week's Supreme Court oral arguments regarding Cobb versus Flome case, several of those Georgia justices indicated that Cobb County did not follow the rule of law, as did Judge Ann Harris when she ruled your actions unconstitutional by continuing to ignore the Georgia Constitution. You also continue to cost the Cobb taxpayers more money by filing an appeal based on standing, not on merit, just to protect one commissioner's seat. So, three Democrat commissioners and four fifths of our Board of Election representatives have marginalized the Cobb County taxpayers, voters, and also the candidates. You're directly responsible for voter suppression and election interference. And you all want to get reelected and run for the 6th District, Congressional District. And speaking of the 6th District, I ran into Lucy Macbeth at my local Publix a couple weeks ago, and I was expressing my frustration with this Home Rule thing, and she said, "Tell me about it," because she has the same issue, because she is not going to be able to vote for anybody but a presidential candidate because of all the changes in the, in all of the redistricting that has been done. The other thing I wanted to talk about, too, is public comment and allowing us or not allowing us to use PowerPoint and audio visuals, and being able to show pictures. And that is a huge infringement on our First Amendment right. The fact that Ross Cavett is going to decide whether, what is good for we, the people, and what we can do, and to prohibit people from having a good PowerPoint presentation to show the facts, to have people to be able to show pictures of the damage that the stormwater runoff has done, that is not okay with us. It's pretty black and white when you can show these things. And just wanted to remind you that it is election season, and remind you too that we don't want the stormwater tax, and we don't want you taking over our trash hauling and recycling. Thank you.
Good evening, Denny Wilson, District 4. As a retired IT professional, I want to speak on this limiting of presentation during public comment. I started in the word processing industry in 1982. We had the Wang, the Dickmate, the Lanier. You guys are probably too young to remember those. And we had the IBM 5520. Later on, '89, '90, '91, they moved to the desktop computer, and they went to the IBM mainframe, which the computers didn't have hard drives. You had to connect to the mainframe using a eight-and-a-half-inch, we called it a floppy disk. When you tell us that you don't have the abilities for us to connect, or you're afraid for us to connect, technology has evolved so much right now. All you have to do is, and it could be an easy process, is you have us connect to your wireless network. You can create a secure tunnel where only people in this BOC meeting can connect. And if something is done illegally, I mean, you have, you'll be able to collect the IP addresses from their phones, and you'll be able to pinpoint exactly who did whatever. So, if we connect to your wireless network, and I'm sure you got projectors, or you have TVs or something here that will connect to Wi-Fi, then that should make it easy for, you know, taxpayers to come in here and to be able to preview their presentation. And secondly, somebody sent me a flyer that the chairwoman sent around about a mom's run, and I was really taken aback because, you know, after I read the flyer, because the way that you govern, you don't care anything about moms, because if you did, there are women, I walk with the woman every day, and she said to me last week, she says, "You know, Denny, I'm stretched to the max." She said, "My son is in private school. I'm working from home. I'm barely making it. If the county raises my property tax any more than what it is, if they put a stormwater fee on me, I'm going to have to pull my son out of private school. I'm going to have to put him in public school, and that's not something that I want to do, or I'm going to have to get two or three, you know, different jobs." So, if you cared anything about moms, you back off this stormwater tax. You take a look at this $11 billion transit tax that you're getting ready to implement, because a penny sales tax would also increase the amount she pays for clothing, shoes, computers, anything that they have to purchase for their children. So, when you say you care about moms, make it true, because right now it's not.
That's Wilson. Time's up. The next speaker is Elaine Murphy.
Hello, I'm Elaine Murphy. I live in Marietta. 30 years ago, I was in Orlando and got a job offer here in Atlanta, and I looked at, well, along with my husband, looked at all of the area around Atlanta to live in. And we went to the library, did research. We chose Cobb. So, I've been here 30 years. And in that period of time, I have been very involved in this community, both as a volunteer with the school system, as a worker. I deal, I'm down here all the time. And I'm really concerned about these taxes that you guys are trying to raise on us. I really am. I know, I know where waste is. And I am an accountant. I'm a project manager. I deal with permitting. And I'm going to be looking into some of these things, because I already know some of them. And this is just now being brought to me. So, this is my first time here. So, there'll be being some public records being requested by me, and I'll be looking into this, and you'll be seeing me again. That's all I've got to say.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity. This is my first time speaking here. I live in Cobb County, a few minutes from Sprayberry. Like most people who have spoken.
Excuse me, sir. May you state your name for the record again, please?
I apologize.
No problem.
It's Tony Goldthorpe.
Thank you.
I live a few minutes from Sprayberry High School. I've lived here, like the last speaker said, moved here from Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, chose Cobb County due to the low taxes, affordability. I think I bought my home back when you could buy a home for $150,000. The reason I'm here is, the last four or five years, I've just seen my taxes go up and up. I brought my daughter here so that she can see, she sees us doing the bills, my wife and I. We're trying to figure out what we can pay, what we can afford. You know, when I, I heard about this meeting because of social media. I've spoken to several of my neighbors. I live in a neighborhood of about 50 people, and like most of us, we just kind of go about our day. We don't think about these types of meetings, these type of, you know, events and taxes. But now that social media has kind of picked up, we see these things. So, it's kind of, you kind of have awakened a sleeping giant. I mean, I look at the stormwater tax, I'm just learning about folks that have put this information out there, looking at the transportation tax, looking at the budget, and I just think, wow, like 35%? I haven't had a raise in two years. You know, the last speaker that's retired, and she's trying to figure out how she's going to pay her bills, I think about my daughter, you know, how are they going to afford a bill? The additional increases. I just think any new tax that is put into place, any tax increase that is put into place, has to be carefully scrutinized. It has to directly help the people that you are elected to serve. So, I would just ask you kindly, before we raise any taxes, that we think about that carefully, and please consider the needs of your constituents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tracy Stevenson. We're going to get that right yet. At the end of the day, people have already talked about taxes a little bit. We have a few issues. I've brought them up before. The MSPLAS tax that you're wanting to put on the ballot, that you're going to put on the ballot, it's a big dog. It's a loser. It's a 30-year proposition. You tell us it's only a penny. It's a penny on every sales tax dollar we spend, is the reality. So, I come to you and go, you know, I've done the math. The 15 million that comes out of the Water Department into the general fund is only a penny towards your budget. It's actually 1.25% of your budget. So, if you want us to give up a penny, why don't you start? You know, I mean, a penny's just a penny, right? You can find it. You found $25 million for the sheriff's office redo and jail redo after the budget process. The 35% increase people are talking about was, it was the 2022 budget was the first one to crack a billion dollars, made a billion-dollar budget. Now, we've gone through 2023, over 1.1. We rolled it up to 1.2 in this year's budget. And the coming ask that I've seen, I've watched your work sessions, you know, I don't know what the final number's going to be, but I'm hearing a number of over 1.3 billion. So, in four budget cycles, we're going to be 30 to 35% increase. It's just unsustainable. Your thirst for our tax dollars is insatiable. At the end of the day, we've got to figure out how to live co-equally together. I know things cost more, believe me. My wife and I used, just the two of us, used to spend $125 a week on groceries. My last grocery bill was $187. I see it every day, every week when I go to the grocery store. I buy gas. It costs more. I understand the math. I just want to make sure y'all understand the math. Money is not fungible. It's not always, you can't always just make. It's not always, you can't always just make more. The rest of us have all been out on our jobs and earned money. And we earn our money, we pay our taxes, we try to be good citizens. I just need for everybody here to think about, there's a lot of wants that people have. But my dad used to always tell me, do you want it or do you need it? Because if you need it, like infrastructure, that's pretty important. I think we need those things. I think we need to be good stewards of our money. I'm not faulting everybody for wanting special projects done and have all kinds of options that they wanna put into life. But at the end of the day, we gotta start from the ground up. We gotta do the things that are important to everybody. And we gotta start watching our dollars. 35% in four budget cycles. 35%. I've got 12 seconds left and we'll say it one more time. Thank you.
Donald Barth.
I'm on a roll. I'm 2 minutes 58 seconds in. How you doing, ladies? One of the things I wanna bring up is the good. This past week, we had the Master Gardeners, which was an event for all of Cobb County. Everyone in Cobb County was central to that location, just like the fairground, whatever. But there was something there for everybody. So we have people going down there, you're going to kiss babies somewhere. Poor baby. Not, but. The thing that's going on next is the bad. And I am so proud of two of you tonight. I don't care what was said, the rush to get you to do something without stating that you've been screwed and stand your moral ground. We all heard the Supreme Court this week. You had to listen. God, I loved every minute of it. In fact, the first 20 minutes, I swear to you, they ate that girl alive. They chewed her up and spit her out. I mean, where did she think she was? She wasn't a kindergarten teacher. Those justices know what they're talking about. And on merit, they may win overall because somebody didn't dot an i or cross a t. You lost. Monday is when the election cycle begins in Cobb County. You screwed everybody in this county. You screwed everybody and you know you did. You were as guilty of it as she was. I'm still hoping we get indictments in the long run because this was never supposed to be. You took an oath to sit on that dais. You took an oath. It said, "I will follow the Constitution of Georgia." Did you follow the Constitution? Well, hell, no. You did what the hell you wanted to do. You're gonna pay for this. It's an election cycle and you're gonna pay dearly. I want you to understand, when Monday rolls around, if a judge has not ruled and stopped this election process, then the whole system is flawed. There is no way that you can use my tax money to fight me and keep me out of that seat up there or any seat. You just don't have what it takes. You think you do, but you're gonna pay the price. People that come out and do that kind of dirty stuff pay the price. You're gonna pay. And in the end, I hope you all realize, two of you are holding the high moral ground. You spoke tonight. Did you hear what you had to say talking about fairness?
Your time has run. Thank you.
Your time has run. The next speaker is Leslie Davis.
My home has been reassessed every year for the past three years, raising my tax bill by over $1,000 each year. That is mostly school taxes because I have Homestead. But imagine what these last three years have been like for renters. If the majority of this board would allow the tax-neutral rollback rate to automatically kick in instead of voting every year to raise the millage rate back up, then it wouldn't matter what those houses assessed for. Not to mention that in my neighborhood alone, many decades-long owners who have been paying lower taxes are moving out and the houses are being flipped for hundreds of thousands more to young families. So your tax digest is already going up anyway. So I'm here begging for relief. The following are all challenges I've faced over these last three years. So imagine the following scenarios for a landlord paying taxes without Homestead. I was rear-ended and my car was totaled. In comes the car payment. Our washing machine burned up, $1,300 gone. We had to replace our roof, $12,000 gone. We had to have plumbing work done, another thousand gone. We had to have our deck and some brick on our house repaired, $2,200 gone. Our HVAC system needs to be replaced this spring, $9,000 gone. Every time I go to the grocery store, fill up my fuel tank, every time I need a car repaired done, which that just happened, another $1,100. Or take my pets to the vet, every time I eat out or have my gutters cleaned, every time I get my car insurance or home insurance bill, I find that the prices I'm paying have skyrocketed. I work five days a week, 52 weeks a year. That's right, I don't take vacations. I don't get paid vacations or paid sick leave. I don't get a pension or retirement plan through my job. I don't get health insurance from my job. I haven't had a raise in years. I think it's enough already. Just because you say my house and all the other houses in Cobb County are worth more doesn't mean that we have the money in our pockets. Allow the millage rate to roll back and stop taxing us on unrealized gains.
Hello, my name is Sheila Edwards. I'm from the Mableton community of Cobb County. I title, I title my comments, "Audacity of Triple Taxes in Cobb County." I went to Webster and looked up audacity and it says rude or disrespectful behavior. But I'll go a step further and say it's harmful and hurtful behavior. As a homeowner and taxpayer, I come before you to denounce efforts to place triple taxes on the backs of Cobb citizens. I look at the request last year when concerned citizens asked for millage relief in the midst of the economic uncertainty we were facing. Citizens were rebuffed by you. Yet the county was able to engage consultant after consultant with huge price tags attached to tell you how to do your jobs. You are also able to allocate $1 million, $200,000 to each office without any accountability. The audacity. We look at the 2.5 million that was paid to a consultant to tell you how to spend the rest of the $150 million you got from federal government. It did not require a consultant to tell you where and how to spend money, yet you engaged them nonetheless. The audacity. We did not elect consultants and we cannot hold consultants accountable, yet you continue to engage them with taxpayer dollars. Again, the audacity. The next tax is the water and sewer tax that you were trying to push on us a few weeks ago. I thank Commissioner Richardson and others for listening to the citizens and demanding more answers instead of rubber-stamping the issue that had more holes than Swiss cheese. That was real leadership in action. The third tax being pushed on the citizens is a 30-year tax for transportation and mobility to the $214 billion. Why would we say yes to placing taxes on our backs, our children's backs, and our children's children's back? Cobb needs to tighten its own belt before it acts citizens for more, including triple taxes. I spoke to a senior citizen on my way here and they said Cobb used to be a place that you moved to that took care of its citizens and took care of its taxes. That was then. Again, the audacity. Thank you.
Chairwoman, this is the last public speaker for the first portion.
Thank you, Bill. We will now move on to our consent agenda. The matters on the consent agenda, we're scrolling on the screen prior to this meeting and we'll scroll on the screen when this meeting has concluded. Before we vote on these matters, Commissioners, we do have one item to add to consent from DOT, which needs four fifths of vote. With that, Commissioners, I move that we approve Amendment Number One to the access agreement with BEEP Incorporated for the Cumberland Community Improvement District's Autonomous Vehicle Pilot Program on the Interstate 285 Multi-Use Bridge. Second, is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, did you say item number one?
Amendment Number One. Okay, is there any additional discussion? We'll call the question and this is to add it to consent. The motion carries 4-1 with Commissioner Gambrell in opposition. We are now voting on the consent agenda. And Commissioners, I move that we approve the items on our consent agenda and that we authorize execution of the necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Second, is there any discussion?
I'd like the clerk to note that I do not support Agenda Item Number 32.
Okay.
That's what we just added to the agenda for Cumberland.
Are there any other questions or comments with respect to the consent agenda? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0, again noting Commissioner Gambrell's opposition to the matter that we added to consent with respect to BEEP Incorporated. We will now move on to the regular agenda. Our first tab is for the Department of Transportation.
Good evening, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager Drew Ressler, Department of Transportation. We have nine items for your consideration this evening. Our first item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve an indemnification and hold harmless agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation required to obtain an encouragement permit for Schaefer Road Sidewalk, Project Number B2602, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Sheffield.
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion? The motion, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the question. The motion carries, all right, 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Transportation Improvement Program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission on behalf of the City of Kennesaw for Stardust Street extension and overpass and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Thank you. Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second, is there any discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a Cobb framework agreement with the Town Center Community Improvement District for decorative traffic signal strain poles for Big Shanny Road at Hidden Forest Court Traffic Signal, Project Number B2571, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Before I make a motion, I would just like to say thank you to Drew and DOT, but also the CID for putting up the decorative light posts for this development. The developer put in money for a signal at this location and it's right across from KSU Stadium. So there's no really county money in this particular project part, a part of this project, because it's paid for by the CID, Town Center CID. And it'll make things look a lot nicer in the area to conform with their standards as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, I make a motion to approve.
Second, is there any additional discussion? We'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Glosson Enterprises LLC in an amount not to exceed $731,413.55 for Big Shanny Road at Hidden Forest Court Traffic Signal, Project Number B2571, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a project framework agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering design of South Cobb Drive, SR280, traffic safety improvements. Cobb County Project Number B2435, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Once again, Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a project framework agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for preliminary engineering design of Cobb Parkway, SR3, at Blackacre Trail, Third Army Road intersection realignment. Cobb County Project Number B2436, authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Give us one moment. We are thumbing through all the pages to get through this next item here.
These agreements are not short.
Okay, Commissioner Gambrell.
And I just wanna thank Drew and his team for moving forward with this project.
Thank you.
So moved.
Second, is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Williams Power and Signal LLC in an amount not to exceed $246,675.88 for flashing yellow arrow upgrade, Project Number B2559, authorize the corresponding budget transaction and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Once again, Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Second, and I'd just like to add, this is going to be extremely helpful at the intersection of Hicks and Concord. So thank you for including that. Okay, is there any additional discussion? All right, we'll call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Our next item is to recommend the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program application to the U.S. Department of Transportation for implementation of the multi-corridor safety improvements project, designate DOT staff as the authorized department representatives for all matters associated with the SS4A grant application, and authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
I'll go to Commissioner Sheffield for this one.
So moved.
Second, is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And our final item this evening is to recommend the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Marietta for Old 41 Highway Bridge over CSX Railroad, Project Number X2116, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burl.
Motion to approve.
Second, is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Drew.
Our next tab is for property management and we'll hear from our interim director, Andrew Yakimovich.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager. Property management only has one item this evening. Property management would like to request the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with the architectural firm LDD Blue Line Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $570,000 for the full architectural services related to the replacement of the animal services facility. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairwoman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Gambrell.
So moved.
Second, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe we are now at our second public comment.
Yes, Chairwoman. Yes, Chairwoman, there's no one to sign up for the second portion.
Thank you, Bill. We will now go to the appointments tab. Before we vote on, before we vote on our appointments, we do have another non-agenda item to add to the agenda by four fifths of vote. And with that, Commissioner Richardson, why don't I defer to you so we can have that added?
Okay, it's a motion to add Agenda Item Number 31, which is related to an appointment to the Housing Authority of Cobb.
Second. Is there any discussion? Call the question. Thank you, Commissioners. All right, and I will now go to Commissioner Sheffield for the first appointment.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Carol Wiley to the Development Authority of Cobb County.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. The next matter is to also be brought by Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I make a motion to approve the appointment of Sharon Henry to the Housing Authority of Cobb County.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. For the next matter, I move that we approve the appointment of Judy Skill to the Civil Service Board.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. And finally, I'll defer to Commissioner Richardson for the next matter.
Move to approve the appointment of Chuck Young to the Housing Authority of Cobb.
Second. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. We are now at the Commissioners' Public Address, and we'll begin with Commissioner Gambrell.
Learn how rain gardens can make a difference. The Cobb County Water System encourages you to consider a rain garden as an addition to your yard. A rain garden is a natural landscape in a low-lying area that receives rainwater from impervious surfaces. Join Cobb Water at noon on Friday, April 26th, for an enriching lunch and learn, Intro to Rain Gardens. This event will primarily take place outdoors at Cobb Water's Wildlife and Rain Garden located at 662 South Cobb Drive in Marietta. There is a virtual option, and the class is free. You can click on the QR code to register. And help your pets find their way home. Get your dogs, cats, and birds chipped at a free microchip clinic from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. on Monday, May 13th, at Cobb County Animal Services located at 1060 Al Bishop Drive in Marietta. There are 100 slots available for Cobb residents. To make an appointment, you can email Jessica Darrow@CobbCounty.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll now go to Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you. All right, so from the office, we're just highlighting the D2 sustainability efforts. We were able to pull together some members of the community who wanted to attend that have been very interested in seeing different initiatives move forward, and we've been able to talk about how we can continue to make that progress happen and have those robust conversations, and how Cobb County can continue to inspire its surrounding neighbors. From the community, free pop-up legal clinic this weekend. Bring your legal questions to the next free pop-up legal clinic, 10:00 a.m. to noon, Saturday, April 27th, at the Smyrna First United Methodist Church. Ask the volunteer lawyers about issues including landlord, tenant, child support, family law, small claims, probate, bankruptcy, and immigration. The Cobb County Bar Association, Cobb Legal Aid, Smyrna, First UMC, Cobb Community Foundation, and Smyrna Council members Latonya P. Hines and Travis Lindley are partnering with the Cobb magistrate court to make this event possible. Please remember to bring all important documents relevant to your questions. And Forensics 101 with Allison Gaines. Join forensic investigator Allison Gaines at Bynings Library as she discusses the role of the Cobb County Medical Examiner's Office. During this event, attendees will get an inside look at the work of a death investigator. Come join the conversation and get the facts about the autopsy and investigation process. This program is for adults only, and registration is required. And for more information, please call 770-801-5330, or email gerbert.evsell@cobbcounty.org. And certainly you can always keep up with me if you have any questions, if you want to meet with me one-on-one, my calendar's open. Make sure you register for the newsletter, and our next agenda preview will be May 13th with community huddles coming up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. We are now at Commissioner Burl.
Thank you. Before I get started with my slides and presentation, I'd just like to say again, congratulations to the Kelsmen's basketball team, winning a back-to-back state championship this year. Last week, I had the honor to attend a historic event at Mountain View Elementary School. For the first time ever, Mountain View made direct contact with the International Space Station through the amateur radio on the International Space Station Eris program. This incredible opportunity allowed students to engage directly with astronaut Jeanette Epps aboard the space station and ask her questions about life and work in space. It was truly remarkable, and I'm fortunate that I was able to attend. Congratulations to Sprayberry High School Senior Elite Class of 2024. There were 54 applications, and 20 were selected, and they're judged on their school-sponsored clubs, sports, activities, academics, honors, and awards, and community service. So congratulations to the Sprayberry Senior Elite Class of 2024. Saturday night, there was a lot of events going on, but I was at the Cobb Veterans Memorial inaugural gala, foundation gala. And it was a great turnout, it was a sellout event, and I'm told they raised a lot of money to help build the memorial that's near and dear to our hearts. You can go to the cobbveteransmemorial.com website if you would like to participate in help building the tower, the memorial. Thank you. This Sunday, Frameworks Galleries invites you to join them in celebrating, I'm sorry, not this Sunday, in celebrating 50 years of service to the East Cobb community. The events will be 10:00 to 6:00 p.m. this Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. this Friday, April 26th, and Saturday, April 27th, at Frameworks Gallery, 1205 Johnson Ferry Road, Marietta. It's an open house and fundraiser, and will feature original art and pottery by local artists. Proceeds will benefit the East Cobb Park to build Sunny's Butterfly Garden. If you're not able to attend, you can donate directly at the website donorbox.org/sun-walker-garden. And there's not a flyer for this next, well, hold on to the last slide, hold on, go back. We have flyers printed out in the back table for early voting. It was mentioned it does start Monday, early voting, and the locations and times of the early voting sites are on a flyer in the back table in the lobby there. And then, thank you, Commissioner Richardson, for the proclamation today, and we, for those of us, those who are Jewish community, we wish them a happy Passover, which started yesterday and ends April 30th. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burl. We'll now go on to, excuse me, Commissioner Sheffield.
Thank you. District Four News and Updates. I want to extend a heartfelt thanks to everyone who participated in our annual cleanup event this, last Saturday. The annual event brings awareness to litter as well as honors Earth Day. With the dedication of 150 volunteers, we were able to make a significant impact, clearing away a remarkable 2,180 pounds of litter from our community. Together, we made a tangible difference, and I am incredibly grateful for the support. Many contributed to the success of the annual event. A special thanks to Kimberly White and Keep Cobb Beautiful team for their hard work and commitment to keeping our county clean, to District Four Keep Cobb Beautiful appointees Barry Krebs and Jeff Paget, Cobb DOT, Cobb PD, and Sheriff's Office, also to Dr. Gibson for joining in the cleanup and for the cool ride on her motorcycle. Tricycle, thank you, Commissioner. And also to the motorists who pulled over to purchase chocolate chip cookies to say thank you. I will add that they're not as good as Commissioner Gambrell's cookies, but they worked for that day. Also, a special thanks to the Commissioner assistants who came out to join me, Megan and Ryan, thank you so much for your support. Also, a huge thanks to all of the volunteers, some of which reside outside of District Four. Let's continue working to tackle litter together, and I hope to see even more of you next year. Chief Magistrate Judge Brendan Murphy will be hosting a pop-up legal clinic at Smyrna First United Methodist Church on Saturday, April 27th, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Attorneys will be present to provide free legal advice to attendees. Additionally, local community services will be available on-site to offer further assistance and support. To ensure smooth registration and effective consultations, participants are encouraged to arrive by 9:30 a.m. and are advised to bring important documents relevant to their legal inquiries. The Smyrna First United Methodist Church is located at 1315 Concord Road in Smyrna. And finally, please note that April's In-the-Zone Community Meeting regularly scheduled for April 24th has been rescheduled for May 1st at 7:00 p.m. Our monthly meetings are virtual and a great way to learn about upcoming zoning cases in District Four and connect with your neighbors. Registration information will be noted in my upcoming newsletters. That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheffield. With that, once again, I'd like to thank the Hankerson family for the honor of renaming this facility to the David Hankerson Building, and want to recognize again his contributions to our organization, to our county at large. With that, thank you all for tuning in this evening. Our meeting is now adjourned.